So I will call that to order. I would ask Supervisor Joe Zerflu to please come forward for the invocation. I would ask the body to rise and then remain standing.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I hope everybody joins in today by bowing your head. And let's keep first and foremost in our minds what's going on right now over in the Middle East in a special prayer for our young men and women that are in the military service, especially those over there. Thank you. Father, we gather together here today intent on doing good work. We seek to represent fairly and well the residents of Wood County who have given us this task. May our efforts be blessed with insight, guided by understanding and wisdom, and we seek to serve with respect for all. May our personal faith give us strength to act honestly and well in all matters before us. Father, we ask your protective blessing on our men and women serving in the armed forces, especially those overseas in the Middle East. Also, Father, protect and bless our police, fire, and medical responders who serve us here at home. We thank you, Father, for being our source of guidance today and always. Amen.
You join in Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome, everybody. Thank you Supervisor Zerflu. Before I even get started today, Supervisor Boyd asked if you could do an introduction. Bill, do you want to grab a microphone? Certainly allow that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I brought a guest along with me today. You all know him. He served you well for 18 years. A longtime friend of many of you. He's an icon up there in the Northwood County. If you go to Arpin, Sherry, Auburndale, Belinkar, Melador, they all know him. Ask me, I know. He's 86 years old, lives in the very home that he was born. Longtime bachelor his whole life. My friend, Bob Ashburn.
Welcome back, Bob. It's good to see you, Bob. I know you faced some issues here recently, and you're looking great. Glad to have you sitting in the back of the boardroom. Welcome. All right, so moving forward today, the minutes of the previous meeting will dispose of those. I have a motion by Clint ending, a second by LaFontaine. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Any discussion? All in favor of approval, please signify by aye.
Aye.
And opposed? And opposed? And that motion carries. I did have an excusal, but he's sitting there right in front of me. Supervisor Pence, over. You made it today, so there was a thought that he might be otherwise absent today, but glad to see you're here. Everybody can sign in now. The board is up and running. And Supervisor Hamilton is joining us remotely. And Ho坎. And Supervisor Ho坎. Thank you. We have no resignations today. We have no appointments or reappointments. Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment today? Supervisor LaFontaine, you're not public. I'll let you make a comment if you wanted to.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if you can all hear me, but I rise a little bit in frustration and disappointment because of what happened with our economic development funds from what the seed approved and what the Operations Committee reduced and cut us back. Not only that, but then for highways, highways was always had a levy. And now the levy has been taken away and backfilled with bonding. Now the bonding has been taken away. So I'm a little bit disappointed and frustrated in the way the operations, the way this body is operating. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor LaFontaine. I have no acknowledgements and recognitions today. We will have a special order of business from Bug Tussle at the end of the packet. And with nothing else before us other than the packet, we'll get started there. So page six is the referrals. Letter from Lion Energy in regard to the Wood County Solar Bailey Project. And that went to the appropriate people. And then as we move into the committee meetings, the minutes of the Operations Committee, pages seven through nine. They're starting their meeting on September 21st. The Operations Committee of October 3rd on 10, 11, and 12. Monthly letter of comments from the county clerk on 13. From the Treasurer's Office on 14. Employee Wellness on 15. And then that brings us to the first resolution in the packet brought forth by the Operations Committee.
This will be Resolution 23-10-1 to accept the offer of sale of tax-deed and property. Fiscal note: The offered amount minus real estate taxes, special charges, special assessment, publication fees, and tax dealing expense net the county a gain of $139,358.79.
Motion by Rosa, second by Bry. Any discussion on the resolution? Any discussion? I'd ask you to please vote.
Hamilton, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Got it, thank you.
The resolution passed 19-0. 19-0, thank you. All right, moving forward in the packet, Health and Human Services Committee, September 28th. Their minutes on 18, 19, 20, and 21. We have minutes from North Central Community Action Program on pages 22, 3, and 4. An update from the Wood County Health Department on pages 25 through 28. And from the Human Services Department, beginning with Director Ruins on 29 runs through pages 37. 29 to page 37. Veteran Service Officers Report on 38, 39. Public Safety Committee, their meeting of October 9th on 40 and 41. Local Emergency Planning Committee, 42 and 43. And then we have the monthly report from the Sheriff's Department that runs from pages 44 to 66. 44 to 66. Take a breath there. Anybody have any questions? Moving along here pretty quickly. The minutes of the Seed Committee, their meeting from October 4th on 67. That's where it begins. It goes through page 70. 67 through 70. The joint meeting of the North Central, it back. And that's, name of that committee is going to be changed officially to the North Central Tourism Committee. Sure, a little more recognition as to what we do. That was originally named that way when we were dealing with some of the both cranberry and other agricultural issues, ginseng, when we were doing a number of trips, you know, to Europe, Far East, and other places as we were working on some of these in it. It really doesn't pertain to what we currently do, which is basically tourism. So you're going to see a name change there in the very near future. That was 71 and 72. The report from extension beginning on 73, and it runs through page 77. And then we have the activity report from Land and Water Conservation. Begins on 78 and runs through page 82, 78 through 82. The Citizens Groundwater Group Meeting of September 25th on 83 and 84. Update from Planning and zoning, beginning with Director Grunberg is on 85. And that runs through page 88. 85 to 88. We have the Rural Economic Development Initiative, the Ready Group, 89, 90, and 91. And that brings us to a resolution on page 92 brought forth by the Seed and Operations Committee.
This will be Resolution 23-10-2. Seek County Board of Approval to request the state of Wisconsin to revise its policy of owner, foreign ownership of farmland, and there does not appear to be a fiscal note.
Motion by Fisher, second by LaFontaine. Any discussion? Any discussion? They ask you to please vote?
Hamilton, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ho坎 and Hamilton. They've got those. And again, the resolution passes 19-0. All right, moving forward in the packet, page 93, Judicial and Legislative Committee meeting from October 5th. That's 93, 94, and 95. The minutes from the Residential Options Committee on 96 and 97. Update from the Child Support Agency on 98. The Clerk of Courts on 99. Corporal Counsel on 100. Register and Probate, 101. Registered Deeds Office on 102. And then we have the minutes of the Herb Committee. They're meeting from September 20th on 103. The minutes from their regularly scheduled monthly meeting, Thursday, October 5th on 104, 105, and 106. Update from the Wood County State Wildlife Advisory Committee. They're meeting minutes on 107. The monthly report from Roland Hawk and the Highway Commissioners Office beginning on 108. That runs through 114. 108 through 114. Monthly update from the Park and Forestry Department, beginning on 115 and 1 through 118. And I'll note it here, and I don't know, maybe we'll see something. Chad, I know you're in the back there. We had Sue Takki, last day was Friday, I believe? Because last day was Friday. I happened to run into her out that evening at dinner. She thanked the county for the gift she had received upon her retirement. And I assume we're working on some replacement in that office. Okay, thank you very much. So if you see Sue, congratulate her. She worked for us for a long time, and they did a tremendous job. So that's 115 through 118. And that brings us to a resolution on page 119 in the packet brought forth by the Herb Committee.
This will be Resolution 23-10-3 to create two truck operator positions for the Highway Department. Fiscal note: Anticipated 2023 wages and benefits total $41,621.47. Anticipated 2024 wages are anticipated to be $166,485.90 for a grand total of wages and reduction of summer help and revenues from outside sources of $574,081.
Motion by Buckey, a second by Clint ending. Any discussion? Any discussion? All right, seeing none, please vote.
Hamilton, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, John. That resolution passes 17-2. 17-2. All right, moving forward, Property and Information Technology Committee. They're meeting from Tuesday, October 2nd on 120, 121, and 122. The monthly update from IT on 123, 4, and 5. Monthly letter of comments from Facilities Manager on 126. And then we have the Junior Fair Board Minutes on 127 and 128. The Central Wisconsin State Fair Board of Directors Meeting from August 15th on 129 and 130. South Central Library System Board of Trustees Minutes, 131 and 132. The Wood County Library Board Meeting, 133 through 136. That includes the additional information included with those minutes, 133 through 136. And then we have minutes of the Jail Construction and Hack Committee on 137 and 138. And that runs us through what is a relatively short packet and only three resolutions. That went pretty quick. We do have a special order of business today, and that's an update on the Bug Tussle activities. Jason, I'll have you come forward. I don't know if you have your... All right. I wasn't sure if our other Jason was coming in or who else.
Actually, it's Scott Belt.
Okay, Scott's in. So Jason, I'll let you do the introductions and a preview of what we have here.
Morning, everybody can hear me? Okay. Yes, so most of you were the investment that's being made in Wood County across the state as far as broadband. Since COVID, it's really been, we've been making a strong push to get broadband into every corner of the county here and broadband to every resident here. We have worked in Wood County with many providers. There's a lot going on as far as it goes. And I want to say proudly that I think Wood County is positioned well in comparison to a lot of other counties out there. Even though you may not have broadband today, a lot of the projects are in place and fibers being put in the ground and other ways of getting broadband are being put into play. But as most of you remember, we have had a pretty good working relationship or a very good working relationship with Bug Tussle, as have many other counties. We worked with them a few years ago on what's called fixed wireless. It's a tower-based broadband service that is sent by signal to homes. We've also worked with them on putting what's called mid-mile fiber in the ground in Wood County. It'll serve fiber up to many homes in the future here. Wood County's investment into those projects has been $11 million in conduit bonding, along with many other counties in the state. I'm not sure what the total number is here, but Scott from Bug Tussle probably shared those numbers. A lot of the fiber is not quite online yet, but if you drive around, I'm sure you've seen utility trucks out there. You've seen work being done in ditches. There's good chance that's been Bug Tussle work or other providers out there. The focus of today is not to give you a broad view of what's happening. The kind of more focused on what Bug Tussle's been doing with $11 million of bonding that Wood County has committed to them. And at this point, I'm going to welcome Scott Belt. He's the Executive Director of Government and Public Affairs with Bug Tussle and formerly the Administrator for Kiwanee County. Is that correct? So he knows very well about the operations of county government. At this point, I'll turn over to Scott. If there's broader questions after the presentation here, I'd be happy to answer those. But at this point, I'll turn over to Scott.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Jeez, it reminds me. At one time, actually, I used to be a county board supervisor in Rock County for about eight years. So I know very well the seat that you're sitting in. I'm not sure if any of you had received reports, so those can get passed out. So where we're at right now, as Jason so aptly said, what we've been looking at is trying, we've been putting conduit in the ground. I know that we're making some good headway in Pittsville. Probably the difficult part that we're trying to see right now is just supply and inflation. What we've seen is equipment rates have doubled, if not tripled, depending on what you're looking at, whether those are boxes, conduit, and the like. But as you can see from your spring report, when we look at the towers, which is your fixed wireless, we have roughly 15 out of... Oh, I'm sorry. Nope, chair. We have 15 out of 16 towers already up and going. The other one is just working its way through, but it should be done shortly. We hope to actually have the Pittsville segment, the OLT. We're hoping to have that live by the end of the year, again, weather permitting and that costs don't kill us in that respect. But we continue to work forward. If you also look from the second page with customers, what you're seeing right now is we have, as of the end of August, 65 total subscribers with another potential roughly 1,600. So we will continue to be pre-selling in that respect. And then as for fiber, again, we have in the plan 164 miles of planned fiber. We have right now 65 of that. I'm sorry, I think that's a typo. I think it's 93 miles that's in there that's designed. And we're trying to get 65 of that is in conduit in the ground right now. But we continue to try to blow that fiber and make the connection so that way we can at least have one of the segments live before the end of the year. And I guess I'll try to answer questions as best I can.
Supervisor Rosa.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So can you give us a little estimate of how much of our $11 million you've used to date? And kind of what's your long-term plan for using the rest of that and then starting to pay us back?
I'll be honest, I didn't look as to how much we have left in the draw, but I can assure you, because, and some of you may be aware, actually, I was also the Kiwanee County Administrator prior to taking this position. And we have also done fiber and tower projects. And I can tell you that Bug Tussle continues to make their payments to Kiwanee County and as do all counties. So from that standpoint, from the contract, we fully intend to make all of our payments as contractually obligated. I'm sorry, I didn't know the exact dollar numbers. Exactly what he said.
Well, that is wonderful. So is there a goal, like your timeline for utilizing all that money that we bonded for?
We hope to have it all done. As you can see in the report, roughly, we'd like to have it done by the end of 2024.
Oh, okay. Good.
I mean, I'll be honest, it's been a little difficult just because of supply chain. And inflation has made things a little bit more difficult. But we still fully intend to try to meet the end of 2024 timeline.
Supervisor Clint ending.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So how do I explain to my constituency out there that this was a good thing we did with Bug Tussle? Because they're going to do a lot or improve a lot for us. We already have what we think is good. How is this going to make it better?
Certainly. Because I had to, Supervisor, I had to answer that same question to my constituents in Kiwanee County. I look at a couple of different things. One, at least in Kiwanee County, and I'm going to assume that it was very similar in Wood County, that you have a number of residents that are pleading, begging, screaming for better internet availability. And so that first step was to bring towers throughout the counties to provide more availability for the residents. And then to make that even faster and to make the connectivity and the reliability even better, then we try to put fiber into the county and then distribute from there. So for that $11 million, what you'll be getting, and this is how I sold it to Kiwanee County. For $11 million, you're going to get better internet access throughout the county. And at the end of it, you get all your money back plus interest.
So to answer your question directly, Supervisor Clint, in your district, which overlaps with my district, you're not going to see a difference. We already have 400 meg up and down. We have two providers that have fiber in the ground everywhere. But from a county's perspective, if you talk to Supervisor Han and some of the people out in that area that had no service, they have generally tremendous service. You also can pick that up on your phone when you're in those areas too. You know, if you're using the wireless capability. So to Grand Rapids specifically, or the City of Wisconsin Rapids, Marshfield, you're not going to see a big improvement anywhere. You're probably not using that service to begin.
Yeah, the chairman's right. Bug Tussle, for the most part, we predominantly focus in what I would consider the rural areas. Not, for us, Wisconsin Rapids would be considered an urban area, which usually already has providers. So where our focus has been in more of the rural areas, where a lot of those providers have been less likely to go into.
Jason.
Yes, Scott, could you talk a little bit about, I guess, another added benefit that would benefit all residents of Wood County is the county and local government having access to strands of fiber?
Thank you, yes.
That was probably one of the bigger selling points to all residents in the county, regardless of where they reside.
Yeah. What Bug Tussle is also doing, because Wood County is a local partner with us, is we provide, I believe it's eight strands?
I'm not sure of the number. We're still going to negotiate the exact number.
I believe it's about eight strands of dark fiber, which then allows counties to connect with their other county buildings, local government buildings, and be able to have kind of their own internet network for themselves to be able to do government work that those strands do not cost the county a dime. That is part of the relationship and part of the agreement with Wood County. As well as what we are doing through Bug Tussle University is we also provide technical classes to the public. We have various classes like how does this darn thing work? What talks about spam email? A variety of different things in that respect to help residents to be able to use the technology that they'll have access to.
Supervisor.
No, it will not. Nope. The only thing it could do is improve it if you were to go to AT&amp;T. Because depending, some of our towers, we co-locate with AT&amp;T.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Supervisor Hamilton.
Thank you, sir. Hey, I have Bug Tussle on my Camper, still my resident. And I use my cell phone through my internet. And that's the only way I can get cell phone service out there. I have it in my Camper, and I use a dish. It's a square dish. Well, it's obviously bigger than you can see, but it works awesome. I, you know, we have, every once in a while, we have an appearance. I have an appearance at home. You know, it works. And it's great for the rural areas. When they call me, they say, well, we don't have fiber option. Is that what I'm thinking? We don't have that on there yet. But he said, we've got the power thing. And I said, well, that's fine. They came out and installed it. It's worked great. If I've had trouble, Bug Tussle's been right on. So if the people have, you know, when they get connected, they have trouble getting a hold of their customer service, they're awesome. I'm not running a thing for it. I'm just saying, I like it. I really like it. I just shut it down because we're not using it anymore. They said, they shut it down for $5 a month, and I don't have to worry about it. And the string starts back up again, so that's what I call it.
We have seasonal subscriptions as well, yes, like what Supervisor is doing.
Supervisor Rosa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'd like for you to talk for just a minute about whether you collaborate, cooperate with other vendors. We've heard a lot of complaints that nobody knows what's going in there right away. Nobody knows, you know, who's running fiber. The towns are complaining a little bit about a lack of cooperation between vendors. Can you tell just a little bit about how Bug Tussle might avoid duplication? And I'd just like to hear what you have to say.
Sure. I can try to touch on a couple of those things Supervisor Rosa. As for duplication, that I can't guarantee in the respect that each internet service provider is going to design their route, however they're going to design their route. And depending on some of those, that may be meaning that there are multiple lines within a specific right of way. But there's a couple of different things that we do as Bug Tussle. One is what we call open access, which is part of the road program, rural open access delivery. And what that means is if another provider wants to use our middle mile fiber to therefore provide service to another subdivision that they may be doing fiber to the home, we're absolutely open to doing that. In that same respect, when we talk about permitting and messing up people's yards or rights of way and that type of thing, when we design the route and the network, we try to make sure that we get all the proper permitting from the towns, from the county and the like, so they know exactly where we're going. Now, the toughest part, as always, comes to, and that's the middle mile. When we eventually get to the fiber to the home, that's where it gets a little bit stickier, right? And part of the reason why is because depending on where the handhold is or the flower pot, in other words, where we take the line from the middle mile and bring it to the home, that could mean that the best access is going to be through a person's yard. But it could be that, well, we have to do something different. Why? Because they have trees or a garden or something like that, and you don't want to necessarily upset that. As well as what we try to do as much as possible from an installation standpoint is we try to be as mindful of a person's yard as possible. Because there's nothing worse than to come out, you get free internet, you get internet, but now you've got a mess in your yard, and now it's tough to mow your lawn, or there's a hole left by where the box was. And so we try to be as mindful as possible. And if something isn't the way you want it, then please call our customer service folks. We'll come in and try to make that right.
So did I hear you slip and say free internet?
No, I did not say that. I slipped, yes, but I did not say that.
And the complaints aren't coming from homeowners. They're coming from towns officials.
Right.
Because they don't know what's going in their ditches. There doesn't seem to be any collaboration between vendors. You know, somebody runs fiber, and then somebody comes the next month and runs fiber right by that. And that's what's confusing. And I've asked a couple of questions about what we can do about that. Doesn't seem to be a whole lot about what we can do about that.
Well, yeah, Supervisor Rosa, unfortunately, from a collaboration, I won't say that we don't play nice, but most providers want to have their own fiber going through the right-of-way and their own network. And part of the reason why is because if I use TDSs or Spectrums or someone else's fiber, then I'll have to pay rent to use that. And more often than not, it's cheaper for me to then run my own fiber and do it that way. The difficulty, again, from the town standpoint, what we try to do is we try to let people know where our routes are. The question that I'm not sure from the town standpoint is do they have a permitting process that needs that to happen? Or is that just something that, and again, each county is different, or is that something that we just have on file kind of with the county as to where our planned route is? And again, let me touch base a little bit more on that. Sometimes those routes can change for a couple of different reasons. One, we may find that going down Rock Road is not the place to go. Why? Because Rock Road is filled with rock, and therefore, the cost of boring into rock is 10 times more expensive and takes longer than if you just have a normal right-of-way. So there are times that depending on what we come up, come up to, which you don't know until you start to go into the ground, those routes may change slightly.
Thank you.
Sure. I think Supervisor Rosa, what you're looking at is, you know, each one of these companies must have their own, I'll use the wrong terminology, pipeline.
Yep, absolutely.
What the towns would like to know is when one is going to do that within a timeframe, could they all do that so they don't tear it up five times? And the answer is, at this point, no. But it would be nice if we could get that. Do you want to call cooperation or have that plan in place? You know, if everybody knows they're going to run a main route in a certain area, sand rock and everything, that they, that they do that within a time where they don't tear it up three or four different times.
You would hope that would be the case, but you're right, Mr. Chairman. It's usually difficult because each provider has kind of their own timeline.
Yep.
And depending on what the staff and material are, they may be going to Marathon County first before they go to Wood County, or Wood County before they go to Adams County, so.
Any other questions?
If not, I'll loiter in the back if there's some other questions that you have independently after the meeting.
We don't permit what we're doing.
Okay, then I'll just sit quietly.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you all.
All right, tomorrow, you have a CAP team event down Madison, WCA. I think the number you are, that's the County Ambassadors Program. A number of you are down there, I assume. I know we have some department heads that will be down there. Hope to see you there. Anything else for the good of the order? Anything else? All right, next meeting is November 14th, Tuesday, November 14th. Trent, want anything?
Which will be preceded by the annual budget hearing and meeting, so it'll be here earlier.
Do we have a time on that yet? We doing 9:00 or 9:00?
It'll be earlier than 9:30.
Thank you very much.
Haven't talked to Mr. Newt yet to finalize that.
All right. With that, I will declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you.